Good evening. We're going to start by calling this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of agenda. Do I have any questions, changes, concerns regarding the agenda this evening? Seeing none, I will move to approve the agenda as presented.
One second.
Thank you. Paul? All right. Public input and announcements. Do we have any this evening?
I think we're all here for presentation. Any public input? Okay. None we had heard of ahead of time.
All right. And I don't see any hands up online, so we will move ahead with public input and announcements. Approval of minutes from October 5th and October 19th. Do I have any questions, concerns, changes from the minutes? Anybody else up? Then I will move to approve the minutes as presented.
One second.
Second from Adrian. Thank you. Student representative updates.
Are you guys here?
Absolutely, Sidney.
Okay. So I don't know if Dana's there.
Yeah, I'm here.
But, okay. But I have been working with Ms. Thompson. We usually do it Thursdays while in school. And I've been creating a slideshow for the TV in the lobby of just pictures of the internet club, spirit days, like spirit week, just a whole bunch of different things. So to get, like, just to have something in the school. So I've been doing that and hopefully it will be up maybe tomorrow. So that will be up hopefully tomorrow. And then I don't know if Dana wants to speak about other things that we've been doing.
No, what I will say is that me and Sidney and Ms. Thompson have been continuing to work on an interface in which we can reach out to students. And we found that we wanted to do, we wanted to make a form and send that out to different grade levels, as well as, we discussed a paper-based option, which we had, we had actually done with the ninth grade, and we discussed continuing that along with a digital option. I don't know much more than that.
Well, does anybody have any questions for the students? Representative updates? Anybody? Okay. Well, thank you very much for the updates. I appreciate it. We will move right along to Mill River Math and English Department updates.
Who's first? Are you going to rock, paper, scissors?
Well, Erin and I, we flipped a coin, and English wanted to go first.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
We'll also standardize testing. English always goes first and math the second.
As well as alphabetical, it does too. So...
Okay, I'm going to get your presentation going up there. As you were, you were volunteered.
Thanks, Erin. I appreciate you. So, so the English department, we've got a lot of stuff going on. I just did a little introduction. I teach eighth grade ELA in the middle school. And Wendy?
I teach several different levels in the high school of English, along with some world language thrown in there as well. There are five of us currently in this department for the high school.
And middle school.
Yep, and middle school combined, so.
So, can you? Thank you. So the first, I just gave a little snippet of what each class is doing, just so that you could, you know, get a glimpse into Mill River's English. So Devin Bradford, she teaches seventh grade. She is currently doing a short story unit. She's studying plot and literary elements. The entire seven through 12 work on Greek and Latin roots. So we are all trying to increase students' vocabulary through that program. So that is one of the programs that she is also working on. And then currently, I am studying the Holocaust with my students. So we started the year off studying the time period, Holocaust, who was involved. And then we are moving into, or we are currently reading Night by Ellie Wiesel, who was a Holocaust survivor. And I've been really impressed. My students have had some really deep conversations in class and some really great higher-level thinking. And Ms. Thompson actually came into my class one day and was involved in one of the conversations that we had. So the students are really getting a good glimpse with something that they had, some of them had never heard of the Holocaust before. And usually I teach Diary of Anne Frank, but I switched it up this year to teach Night. And I'm really excited about it. So I did middle school strengths and limitations, only because we do work on different levels in the, between the high school and the middle school. So some of our strengths, our students are doing really well adjusting to the expectations of middle school and coming to, from sixth grade into seventh grade, the work completion, they're working on that, no pun intended. They, you know, participate in a variety of activities, like door decorating. They had an absolute blast with that. And then reading and writing intervention have, you know, we implemented that course about two years ago, and we've seen that students that are struggling with reading and writing, that has helped them across curriculum with their classes. We do, Devin does the writing intervention. She does everything from writing a sentence all the way up to paragraphs and summaries. And with my reading, I do reading intervention, and I do a lot of reading comprehension, which helps in science and social studies also. So it's cross-curricular. Some of the limitations with STAR 360 data that we've seen, we have students that are reading on a multitude of levels, below grade a level, and we have students that are reading at a college level. So finding ways to support those students in those various levels, we're working on that. And we, at one point, had a program called iXL, which supported students in all aspects of English, grammar, vocabulary, sentence structure, reading. So we didn't have that this year, and we see some of the effects of that, but we're going to work toward getting it for next year. And then we have a new English teacher, Leonard Barton Stein, and he is absolutely wonderful. He's teaching ninth and how many sections of tenth? I apologize.
He has two sections of tenth.
Two sections of tenth.
And four of ninth. Yep.
So he's been working on a lot of independent reading in his ninth grade, as well as curriculum reading, or curricular reading. And then in 10th grade, they are reading The Strange Case of Dr. Jekyll and Mr. Hyde. He said the students are really enjoying that, that unit.
Which segues to my curriculum that I'm teaching. I do have one section of ELA 10, so similar to Leonard's report, we just finished The Strange Case of Dr. Jekyll and Mr. Hyde. We're working on the Greek and Latin roots vocabulary in that, with that group. And then I have several other classes that I teach. One other year-long class would be AP Literature and Composition. So in that class, I, what I did to prepare, what I've written here, was I did take a look at the STAR 360 data from the most recent time that we took it, which would have been last month, and then looked at where some of those areas for growth were identified for many of the students in the classes. So when you do look at it and you are able to, I can't really see it.
I know.
But mostly the ideas of the things that we're working on, and they're kind of aligning, basically, with those bands. I shortened, there's huge long descriptors, descriptors in STAR 360 that will tell you this is the whole thing, so I shortened them. And basically with AP Literature, we're working towards, obviously, the exam, which happens in May, but there are some students who are also taking that class just for English credit and not preparing for the exam. There are two that are doing that. So we're really in that class talking about broad themes and figuring out how to connect the evidence that they find in different texts. And we're talking about everything from novels to short fiction passages, poetry, as well as, you know, the larger works, and looking at the themes and being able to identify how the different authors get at those ideas for the reader, and what is the overarching effect of that literature when you are experiencing it. So being able to articulate that for the test involves both multiple choice, as well as three different essays that they have to respond to. So we're preparing for that with that class. Then there's a class called 20th Century Literature. That's a class that has 21 students in it. In that class, we are reading some of what you would consider classic contemporary literature, or 20th century anyway. And we're also focusing on vocabulary, but again, connecting themes. So reading for how certain themes are identified throughout the whole work, and then being able to write about how that is expressed in their own words, has been really the focus there. And so when you look at the end of that, it says relating the details and then analyzing how different parts work together to develop into a whole in a, in a work of literature. That is also from the STAR 360. That's something they're asked to do, is at least identify how different pieces are contributing to the whole piece that they're reading. And then there is a class called Vermont Wild 1, and in that one, we really are, that's the focus on working with note-taking and summarizing skills, being able to actually attend to a podcast or a broadcast of an outdoor journal, and then put things in your own words. What did you learn from that episode? What was interesting? And making those sentences elaborate, so we're not just throwing off five words in a sentence and calling that English learning. We're actually learning how to make compound sentences. And again, strengthening our vocabulary with figurative language, as well as just literal, what does the word mean? Many words have more than one meaning. And so depending on how they're used in context, the meaning changes. So getting them to understand and identify that and, and work with those words. The other colleague that I have that's working with the upper-level students would be Peter Bruno. And he has a class in AP Language and Composition, so that is slightly different from Literature. There, the focus is more on rhetoric, nonfiction type of reading, and again, identifying how writers use certain elements to construct meaning, and the ability of the reader to extrapolate that meaning and then put out what's going on is really kind of the focus of those two courses. He has a section of Honors 10 ELA. They're doing some different things with some other short stories that he's mentioned there. He has a class in Film and Literature, and also a class in Imaginative Writing. I think that covers our strengths and limitations. So we have seen, in the most recent STAR 360 data, at least what I've looked at, that we're getting kind of a little bit of a return to where things might have been. So there was a pretty good dip in that data during COVID and beyond. We tried to create some atmospheres for taking the test that are a little less high-stakes feeling to the students, so they can kind of relax and be in the test. That being said, the questions are timed on that assessment, and some students have really expressed that that, that is a crunch for them, when you have a question and then you have a 60-second timer that's telling you, pick the answer within a certain amount of time. It can be a little daunting, especially if you're not feeling very confident. And so areas for growth would be, that are identified by that, would be continuing with those connections of details, understanding how different things work together within a text. And also, really, our students are needing that vocabulary to be built up more. So that could be for a variety of reasons. Sure, they read texts and online messages and things that are condensed with no problem, but when you start talking about vocabulary that's indicative of maybe going on and studying after high school at a college or a university, a lot of them do not have a strong vocabulary base yet. So we're focusing on working with that limitation.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
So to support our students, we would like to have, or I've spoken to everyone in the English department, have more opportunities for student choice reading. And we used to have a time during the day that we called SSR, Sustained Silent Reading, where every single person in the entire building was silent reading, just to gain that vocabulary, reading skills, comprehension skills. And then having programs available to support students in a variety of areas like iXL. And then we felt that if these were implemented, we would see students' STAR 360 scores increase. They'd have an increased breadth of vocabulary, and they would have opportunity for enrichment choice, and iXL does do that. It's leveled, so if you get a question right, it bumps you up a level, and then it keeps bumping you up a level, and then as many as you get right. And if you get one wrong, it just bobs you down to the level below, but then it keeps, it matches the students' strengths and weaknesses.
Jen, is that like a computerized?
It is. It's a program. The middle, so I don't believe the high school has used it in the past. The middle school has used it for a long time, and it has included, they have included now social studies and some science into there. They're starting to expand what they cover.
And we, we chose not to use it this year because we already have a large contract with Freckle, which more directly aligns with our proficiencies in our assessments.
Yeah, okay. I just didn't know what it was.
And, and, and I think that was grant-funded in the past, too. Is that right? That it was maybe a gear-up grant through Guidance or something like that?
Last year, we paid for it.
Locally?
Locally.
Okay.
Locally, and then before that, it was grant.
And it was, you know, it made sense during COVID to just give as many different supports as we could for differentiation, but coming out of COVID, we're really focused on coordinated curriculum, and we just want to make sure that the materials we're using are as coordinated as possible right now. Not to say it's a never, but there is really specific reasoning for, for why we're making those choices.
I guess if I could, even though it's not my turn. But like, our department had also mentioned the use of iXL and wanting to have that as well, too. I don't know about Freckle as much. I remember when we first heard about it. I don't know about it. Our department also had said about, because so, we do have for middle school, well, okay, some of that is difficult to use, or there's a lot of modifications. And again, we'll talk about that when I get to present. But having iXL or having some sort of a program like iXL that we can use for remediation and recognize is like, all right, so this problem is too difficult, let's, let's give you some other problems that, you know, meet the ability of the student, but also for accelerated students as well, too. So it works for remediation level, but it also works for acceleration enrichment level as well, too. So I just wanted to add that, and then just kind of sort of.
I'm curious, how much, how much reading and, and writing are we actually asking of our kids? I mean, are, you know?
And you said you were working on building stamina.
Right. You've touched on a few books, but...
What I've found since I began teaching here, which was in 2015, is increasingly, students expect to basically do whatever reading they can in class, and there's not a lot of outside reading. I do assign outside reading, particularly with the Advanced Placement course, and students are doing that, but many students need a lot of support to do any reading outside of class. You know, you have students that will go home and finish a book, and you have other students that if you just say, read this, you know, read 50 pages by the next time we meet, and then you get together, and they haven't done that. Even if you, I mean, I provide supports like audio options for people that are really trying to build that stamina. So I think just increasing their exposure, and what Leonard has done, I know, with the freshman class, is he has given them an assignment where they are doing their own independent reading choice, and he's finding that students are, they will reluctantly say, or they will say that they just don't like reading. And then when they read, discover about reading, they tend to then start to want to do it a little bit more.
Is he doing that in class? Like giving them, yeah? And that's the...
It's like 10 minutes.
Like Jen was talking about, the sustained reading piece. If all we're doing in class all the time is, is working with students and giving them assignments, and they're, and they don't have time to read in class, what Wendy's saying is they're not going home and reading. So that idea of, let's carve out a half hour where every kid reads during the day, you know, that's why Jen is saying that's such an important thing, because that's sustained time to sit down and read. Wow, once kids do that, they realize, actually, this reading thing's not so bad. So it's a challenge.
I mean, I know, when kids are little, the biggest deal is going to the library and pick out their books. I mean, is it that, as you say, they just haven't had exposure to, to long stretches of reading? I mean, do they not see it at home?
I think that's a big chunk of it. They are more gravitated towards visual and not necessarily reading. So we try to fix that by continuing to offer variety and modeling it and not making it go away. As far as building the stamina with writing, oftentimes with a writing assignment, you really do have to give it in small pieces. So today, we're going to work on that introductory paragraph. Now we're going to work on evidence paragraphs, and now we're going to work on a conclusion, and now we're going to put it all together. Because if you said, you're just going to write a five-paragraph essay, most of them are just stunned at the gate, and they don't know how to start. So it's rebuilding some of those skills and confidence. And I do think that there was a huge wipe during the pandemic of, of all of that, so.
And I'm also just curious, what, what books are you reading in your 20th century?
20th Century finished The Great Gatsby as a summer assignment, and then we have just completed Death of a Salesman, we're starting Catcher in the Rye. Yeah, you're hearing a lot of classics. Today, we decided to relax, so we did some Robert Frost poetry analysis. So it really is, is hitting along those lines. And in AP, their summer assignment was The Kite Runner, and right now they're reading The Scarlet Letter, because they have a, a portion of that test will say, the third essay says, write on this particular prompt, here's a list of 25 books. So you...
You better have read at least a few.
Read three or four of them, yes, or that you have a book in your back pocket that you really like that you can use for that. But you definitely have to be reading to have success on that exam. In Vermont Wild, we read the Vermont Wild series, which is by Megan Price. We read stories from that. And the second section of that, which is next semester, we read the book Into the Wild by John Creakin.
Also a good book.
Oh, go ahead. I was just wondering, and I don't know how long everybody's been teaching and things like that, but it's like, partially of like reading is like modeling at home and things like that, and having a kind of communication effort with parents and having a relationship. And do you feel like that is different than it used to be? Or, you know, it's like, because I've heard some anecdotal stuff of stuff at TinMith of parents saying, I, I'm not going to do really any, I've done enough for the past couple of years. And that's the minority, but it's, it's like...
I think there's a piece of that. I think there's also the reality that a lot of people are super busy and strapped in ways that maybe they weren't previously, so it's harder for them to really be as maybe involved or modeling with their own students because they're working and they're, they're just not as present.
And going off of that, I'm just going to quote someone during parent-teacher conferences. Well, I don't like to read, so my child doesn't like to read either.
Because it's hereditary.
Yes. And I'm like, really?
That's like, I'm not a math person, right? That's not a thing. We can all do math. Yeah.
Do you get the feeling that people are still reading to their kids from your...
Well, I'm also a librarian. I'd really like to hope so.
Yeah. No, I mean, well, I mean...
At, at the middle school age or, or younger?
No, I mean, just do you get, do you get the feeling that your kids are coming to you from a household where they were read to?
Oh, even as younger kids?
As younger kids?
I mean...
Yes.
So I mean, they do have that.
Because they, we'll have conversations about books that they read with their parents when they were younger. So I know they were read to. It's just, I don't know where the disconnect was or is where they fell out of that love of reading.
Sometimes they just haven't found the right book.
And that's what I say to my kids.
I can still pinpoint when my sister found Little Women on a summer vacation, and she never took her face out of the book, the, or nose out of the book the entire vacation, and then just never stopped, you know, after that point. But it took that, you know, that one connection, and I don't know how you get that one connection.
Well, you know, we try by giving them some choice, too. Because I think I wonder what you were talking about Leonard doing in SSR. I always knew it as not sustained silent reading, but self-directed silent reading. Students could choose their own books.
SSR, what are SSR books, books of thing?
Yeah. Oh, I don't know. I don't know, whatever the acronym is.
Dating myself.
I think a lot of times when you do that, you let the students pick books, so that they can try and find that one book. I, I hope the board was hearing something from these wonderful English folks, that you heard from our TinMith folks and from our middle school folks. They're looking at data, they're identifying where students are struggling, they're tailoring their work to what their students are struggling on, as they're recognizing their strengths, too. And I think that's an important theme that, that we're getting everywhere. We, do you still need to hear from math?
Oh, I have one more question.
Okay.
For the English teachers. I, I was at a Stafford meeting this morning, and one of the things that came up was the technical reading and writing piece that they are not seeing as much of as they would like. When do we, when do we go, are we doing that in science classes? Are we doing, where, where are we doing that kind of, that, those kind of skills? And you're smiling, so...
Yeah, because I'm, I'm hearing my husband in the back. He works, he work, he has a, he's a machinist at GE, and he's, when he has to write something and I have to write something, they're very different.
Oh, yeah, no, technical writing is a different, is a different animal. And I, and so is technical reading. And I'm just curious whether we...
He tells me I'm very fluffy and nerdy. So I don't necessarily work on technical writing, and I don't believe the high school does either.
Okay. Putting that out there.
Yes.
Just, I mean, it was a concern that I heard from the Stafford instructors, that, that that's one of the pieces that they see missing from, not any school in particular, not us. They didn't identify any, any schools, but just as a whole, it seemed like kids were not prepared for that.
Correct. Knowing the students, and a lot of them going to Stafford, I could see that as a concern because there is a big difference in both those types of writing.
Good question.
Sorry, I'm done.
Whenever you're ready.
Are we, okay. So we didn't put together a presentation. Oh, yeah, not really, but. And we looked more at like, because I had the feeling that it was about data, how we're using data to like see growth, and where are we going to, where do we need to support? So as far as the math department, then I, I dragged Erin Darren along for support as well, too. So we're both in the high school math teachers.
And Kelly Stubbs is on screen, but she's a middle school math teacher.
So most of our, I guess where we're seeing growth, or where we're looking at measuring growth, really mostly comes from like our in-class assessments and stuff that we're doing on in-class. And for the majority of us, and I will say, definitely me specifically, but I don't like give out much homework. And most of my stuff is done in-class, and I can see how they're doing. And then when I do give a summative, if that summative is not matching what's going on in-class, then I have to rethink. I'm like, okay, so what's going on? And identify those areas. And I'm going to assume that we all do that as well, too, because, I mean, we communicate back and forth all the time, just like... Just like what's our process in the classrooms. So that was the main area where we're like trying to look at growth, but also where's this support is coming from as well so that we can identify what students need the extra support and then what areas those are in. We do have the STAR 360 scores. Again, for me, and I'll speak personally, but I know Erin might want to talk about it as well too, I mainly look at the percentile score and not necessarily like a scaled score. Or there's also like a color-coded version of it that I don't like as much though. So I look at the percentile score and how well are our kids doing based off of that.
Shane, can you explain for everybody what percentile means? So a student's sixty-two percentile, what does that mean?
Yeah, so the student-
Because that sounds bad, right?
So, yeah, so if they have a score, and Erin, just use statistics here. Their percentile score, so like the sixty-two, sixty-second percentile, if that was their score, that just means that they did better than sixty-two percent of their peers. I believe for this, it's showing across the nation for everyone that's taking the STAR 360 test. Even though our scaled scores are also measured against the state and are also measured against their own peers at the district level as well too. So, yeah, the percentile score is based off of what percentage of their peers did they do better than across the nation?
So two-thirds of the nation to be sixty-second percentile, which is actually pretty, pretty good when you look at it. If fifty is average, you know, we're used to, I think, thinking about, well, fifty's an F, right? Fifty's failing. But if you score in the fiftieth percentile, you did better than half the country and half the country did better than you. So you're looking at average, which is just, I think, an interesting thing to think about because those numbers can mean very different things if you use them differently.
And coming from the math department, we're sometimes frustrated with how data is used.
Yeah, oh, sure.
Right. Well, so where we also do look at the STAR 360 scores is because we do have like an interconnections course. So that's our lower-level math class. Sure, because Erin wants to talk to you.
So, well, no, interconnections is a class I'm passionate about. It's for, generally, it's for students in the lowest fifteenth percentile in our building. And they do not have to take this course, but it's an offering that students are eligible to take interconnections if they score fiftieth, fifteenth percentile or less. You do not have to be a special education student to be a member of that class. And every single year, I have students in that class who are not on IEPs. But we do utilize, one of the places where we find that percentile rank, especially for students who are not on a plan, comes from the STAR 360 testing. It also comes from the middle school teachers giving their input as to what is this, what does this look like for this particular student? You know, we have a random eighth grader who's coming up. If they score in the second percentile, is this a true measure of this student's ability? And for instance, Kelly and I speak a lot when it comes to assigning students to kind of what, what makes sense for a class for them. And she might say, "No, this is just a really bad day for this kid. This is a horrible day. They're totally not in the second percentile. This isn't an appropriate class for them." So we would have that conversation and maybe say interconnections wouldn't be a good fit. Whereas other students, you know, we still have that conversation. So the data doesn't drive a kid being in that class, but it's a, it's a helpful tool to kind of decide, does it make sense for students to be in that class? And the curriculum around that class is really focused on remediation for those students who just really aren't ready for the high school curriculum yet. But that they will move into the high school curriculum the following year. Students who are on a plan, we do use STAR 360 testing, but they oftentimes have other testing as part of their plan. And those other math scores come into play as well when we look at placement. So I just wanted to explain kind of how the STAR 360 can be used on that side of things that isn't particularly a classroom modification, but we have this class because we have this population. If we didn't have the population that needed the class, we would, I would be teaching something else. But that's why we have that, so does that make sense?
And I think an important thing, a couple of important things, you know, Shane is pointing out that he uses in-class assessments like weekly or every two weeks or so to make adjustments. We're not waiting for, well, we took a STAR test in the fall, let's wait till winter and see how we're doing. Shane's doing things periodically with his own classroom assessments.
Actually, some of us, we're probably doing it daily.
Yeah, yeah.
Like I, my, like, for me, it's hard to plan a week.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm on a daily thing. So like what we're working on one day, I will, if it went well, I'll make some adjustments, change it a little bit so it looks differently. So they're not just like, oh, this is exactly what I have to step one, step two, step three. I want them to recognize the type of problem and how are we going to work with it? And so I change it daily. And then in the overall, so a bunch of those formatives every day, and then there'll be a summative. And if that summative isn't matching, like all of that work that we did together, then we got to look at why, why that happened.
And then Erin's talking about STAR 360 being a little higher level decision than, "Let me change what I'm doing next week." It's more about thinking about our students in the right program. You back even further up to Sback, and we take it once a year? You know, that's an even bigger picture, bigger picture thing. And it's really hard to use the Sback to drive day-to-day work. So I think it's great that you're hearing about those different levels of assessment. The other thing they mentioned is it's not one score, one test, one decision. We're collecting a lot of different pieces of, of data. Yes, the assessment data, but also the data from Kelly, the observational data that she brings to the table. So we, we try not to make a decision based on one data point because we know that those can be wrong. So, sorry to interrupt you.
Well, yeah, but, well, so kind of like, it's like now, like, where is our areas of support coming from or how are we recognizing those things? And I just want to say like, the, I think the beginning part of it is the actual correct placement of the student in the math class. And if you think about like our, well, I don't want to say the freshman level, but our, our base level coming into the high school, we actually have five different levels of math for a kid to come into and we can appropriately place them. All of that comes from us communicating. So Erin and I, Jim Heflin with Kelly and Kim in the middle school, talking about each one. We'll sit down a couple of times at the end of the year and we'll go through our lists. First, we'll do it when they're asking for recommendations and we'll go through every single kid, what class are we going to recommend? Then we send the recommendations on us. And then we get kind of like a pre, hey, this is what your class is going to look like. And we look at each one of those classes and say, hey, okay, right, so Kim or Kelly, do you think this student is in the right place? Why do you think that? So a lot of that placement. And that helps for as far as like, are we meeting the kids where they're supposed to be and that support is coming in that class? If we cannot correctly do that.
And it is every single kid. We talk about every single name in the school three, four, so many times.
One of the other helps is that three of those math classes, we have a co-teacher. And so there's a co-teacher in the interconnections. And we have a co-teacher that's in our 1A and our 1B block. So a special co-teacher that helps out also with that side of the stuff with, oh, you have an intermediate, sorry.
And that's on freshman.
That's right, that's right. Well, that's right, so four of our classes, we have a co-teacher in. Another area of need that we recognized was like poor organizational skills that really affected, like, have the abilities of our students and like what they were doing. So this year, for definitely for like our Integrated One classes, the 1A and 1B, maybe a little bit with the Integrated Two, intermediate class, we are making it mandatory that they have a binder that stays in the classroom, doesn't leave. And that goes back to like where I was saying earlier, I don't hand out much homework. Not much goes home. And everything's done in the classroom. And so if I force them to have a binder, and up until this year, we didn't have the textbooks, so everything was hand, handouts. So we're just like, you have a binder, you have a place for that to go instead of just shoved into their backpack or just left on the floor of the table. So I've seen results, positive results from that, having the binder. They know at the beginning of the class, go get their binder, we'll sit down, we'll pull out whatever we're working on, and then everything that we are working on goes back in the binder and goes back to the bookshelf where they keep it, and nothing leaves.
But the other thing about binders is it's not universal. I mean, it's a universal, the fact that everyone has a binder. But the way Shane organizes his binder is different than the way Jim does, is different than mine. Because different classes have different needs and different teaching styles require different organizational skills. So you might have two students, one might have Shane, one might have me. Their binders aren't going to be identical, but they're both going to have one, if that makes sense.
And they're learning the same skill.
Same skill of organization, just depending on the class, you organize things differently.
And when you, when you switch jobs, when you get out in the world, one manager might have you do things one way, one manager might have you do things another way. You still have to learn that same skill and be able to exercise it, yeah.
Yeah, for me, especially that freshman level, it's the, it's the organization piece. Stop, don't lose your stuff. But it's also the responsibility of your work and knowing where that is. Not like, oh, I can't find it, I left it at home. No longer can they say that, we know right where it is, because it's not at home. So I'm taking the responsibility for that. We also use Flex a lot. So again, like on that summative, if it didn't work out very well or it wasn't matching the work that we were doing in class, we can pull them in for Flex for some extra support. A lot of our students are doing retakes during the Flex. So if they don't do so well on the summative, but they knew they had a bad day, they can come in and do a retake of that summative during the Flex block. Couple of years ago, again stemming from COVID a little bit, but we were finding a lot of gaps in our math in the down spiral. So we created a new course called Intermediate Algebra because we were recognizing that the algebra abilities for some of our students was either non-existent or struggling. So we created an intermediate algebra class that is sort of in-between our Integrated One and Integrated Two. So it's mostly for kids who have passed Integrated One or Integrated 1D, but barely. And we thought, right, this kid needs a little extra support or another year before we move them on to the Integrated Two math content. And this is our second year.
Second year.
Second year doing that. So I think that it's going pretty well. We're seeing results, good results for that. But again, second year.
So I think that, so last year, the students, I teach intermediate algebra as well. That's co-taught class as well. I have the same co-teacher with interconnections and intermediate algebra. Last year was not co-taught for half the year, which was a struggle. And then I had, ended up getting a co-teacher. The students last year had much, their deficit in algebra was much greater than this year's. I think we're seeing that rebound coming back from COVID and the pandemic situation where we were having to be very, very independent. So last year, the curriculum was driven really by what were the needs that the kids had from fixing all those holes in our Integrated One, like what they didn't get to or master. This year, it's really trying to help them gain confidence. There, there is not such a dramatic deficit, but these, they just don't have confidence in their ability. So my job is to try and help them gain confidence. And the curriculum is driven by their needs. So talking with Mr. Heflin and with Mr. Little, we talk about what, what did you want me to work on this year that they had a hard time with last year? We'll look at last year's class, we'll see what they need to work on. But Mr. Heflin has said that the kids that took Intermediate Algebra last year and are currently in Integrated Two, the kids who really engaged in the material last year and really were serious about it are doing great this year. That they do see a significant difference in them understanding the material and feeling confident in what they're doing, so.
And the overall thing, like, so a lot of the intermediate kids are coming from me from Integrated One. This year, I was telling Erin for next year, I don't know that I'm actually going to send very many students into Integrated. My group of freshmen that I have this year in Integrated One are doing pretty well overall. And I'm not seeing very many that I think would need to like skip Integrated Two or not go down to Integrated Two and take the Intermediate Algebra class. The other thing I wanted to add, so I'm just going to sort of end this up. I just wanted, middle school wanted to say like, they are very much loving the Arika Math Squared program that they have.
Good.
And again, we'll see, again, it's the beginning of the year, but they're liking it now.
Good to hear.
And we're looking forward to that. And I just mentioned again, like, so they had also like put in a plug for having that IXL, but we can look at that as well too. And then for us in high school, we also had, were able to purchase textbooks for our Integrated Math program. Textbooks in an online version right now. One of our teachers, Jim Heflin, he's been using the CPM program for a while now. Him being a newer, newer teacher and not as experienced and not having as many resources, it's sort of like Erin and I have been teaching for a very long time and without a textbook, we were, we were able to do that for a while and got used to that. So he's transitioning right into using the textbook in his classes, and that's going well for him. And then Erin and I will actually be using Jim a little bit more as a resource as to how to incorporate it more into our classes. But we're very thankful to have it as that resource that we can eventually get to and transition over to eventually.
And the nice part about the, having a textbook in both formats, because I think some people don't understand why we would have both formats. The online textbook has multiple, multiple links into other programs. So for instance, Desmos is a graphing program that's online. The textbook directly links to Desmos. And it's not just like, it just takes you as like a hyperlink. When you get into Desmos from the textbook, it actually has the worksheet as part of your screen. So the kids don't have to go back and forth to the online textbook into Desmos. It's right there. So they know what their directions are, which is not possible if you're just going to give a kid a worksheet and they go into Desmos. You know, they have to keep referring back to the worksheet, so that's one good thing. The other thing is I do have a number of students in Integrated Three who do not have reliable internet at home. So if we only had the online textbook, which is awesome, but if we only had that, that student cannot, those couple of kids actually can't access it at home. They can access it here, so when they use it during Flex or study hall, that's fine. But when they go home, if they need to work on something or they're remediating because they want to make up, you know, reassess, they're going to need, they need that hardcover textbook. So it's, I think it's really beneficial that we have both for the, especially for those kids who don't have the service at home that some of us are lucky to have.
And if I could just quickly tie that to board decisions and data. Last year, we had a meeting with the math department and said, "What do you need when it comes to data?" And they said, "Well, it'd be nice, like, it's really hard to teach without a textbook." And so, which is very valid. And so we went and wrote it into the ESSA grant. And then, I don't know if you remember, but I came to you with three quotes and one was significantly more expensive. And we had a data conversation at the time about why we would go with the more expensive one. And our answers were, it really aligns to the courses we're teaching, to our proficiencies, and to our experts saying that's what they needed. And you chose to buy it, and now you're hearing the outcome of that.
And, and anybody at the finance committee, if yesterday you took the time to look at line-by-line budgets, we don't have textbook funding in our high school budget. It's not there. So this grant was huge in being able to do that.
That's just awful.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why we've been teaching, I think I've been teaching over ten years with a textbook.
Thank you. Questions for the math questions?
I just have one question. And if, if there's not a real solid answer they have prepared now, it's fine. But like, so it sounds like we have a good system for a kid that's in trouble between years. Can you explain what the workflow is, and maybe it's administration too, of like, I see a kid struggling or a group of kids are struggling, we still have to move on with the coursework. What, what is the remediation and the accountability that's happening besides, well, that kid's just going to get a bad grade? Like, what is actually occurring to help that lower cohort succeed? And if, if there's not a great thing, what could, what would be an idea of what we could do better?
So are you asking in one particular course?
Yeah, so like, let's just say like, you did an assessment of somebody. He, he's in the, the course that maybe that you thought they were supposed to be in. And they're just, they're struggling or, you know, it's a, maybe, it's like, you know, you can change only so much to suit a smaller population in the class that's not doing as well, right? So how, you know, because it's that greater gap, right? It just, the, the better, the top kids are going to get better and the lower kids are going to get further away as we go. And so like, do we have a mechanism that says, okay, this, this group is struggling? What are we doing? So you talked about like redoing stuff in Flex periods and say, and it's like, is there something where it's like, we're trying to get parents more involved or we're trying to do something? Because I understand that there's only so many hours in the day that you folks have and there's a lot of kids that you need to, to help. So how are we? I guess the, the real question is, is, because it's like, you know, we all just saw the national study come out that said that everybody's doing much worse than they were before the pandemic and we have to do better. But it's like, how do we, within a year, how do you help the people? I'm sorry, no, it's too much of a question, but.
So there are kind of two answers to yours. One I can't answer, but one I think that we can answer. The one I can answer is systemically, what is the overall procedure, which I don't know all the answer to that. I mean, I think that's an administrative thing.
Yeah, for sure.
But in a particular class, um, the difference with Mill River and the reason I chose to teach in this school is that these teachers that I work with are all about meeting kids where they're at appropriately placed. So even if a kid's appropriately placed, doesn't mean that they're gonna be successful all the time. But the fact that you had, you recognize maybe there are three students who cannot do this one skill. And I've tried working with those kids and I'm like, they're not getting it. What happens? I go to Shane and I say, Shane, I think you've had this kid before. What hooks this kid? What do you think? And then he'll inevitably, we'll all be like, well, I can work with them. And for us, and I know that really isn't like a data answer, but it's really what happens in our classrooms is that the three of us particularly, and it's not because Kelly and Kim aren't awesome and we couldn't utilize them too, but they are in the middle school land of, they're, you guys have their whole situation. But we work together. We all share these kids. Kids will come to Shane if they feel more comfortable with him. His kids will come to me if they feel more comfortable with me. We really try and grab those kids, support them, and try and help them in a variety of different ways because we don't teach the same way at all. But one method might help. That's, that's what I see like on a daily basis.
No, no, I, I definitely fully agree. But that's what we do. In a general sense, like in a classroom, what you're talking about is like a group of them are not doing well. So I'm gonna, so I'm thinking like that, pretty much the majority of that class wasn't doing well on a certain topic. I'm not moving on. Um, or a lot of times I find is if I stop and I leave what we're doing, I might, might move on to something else. And then I will spiral back and come to it and I should do that an awful lot. It's amazing the number of kids when they come back to it, they're like, oh, okay, this is actually making a lot more sense. This is easier now. The problem is a lot of times is the kids get like worn out, struggle, 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 struggle. I don't understand it and they get worn out, tune out. So if you leave it, go on to something else and come back. And then they're like, oh, really? But then they're like, oh, but this isn't so bad. So that's another thing that we can do in a classroom as well too. Um, that tends to help out with that. Now, if that doesn't work, then, then we're, then we're, we're looking at something else. Most of the time, they weren't appropriate placed and maybe we have that conversation, but, uh, which we can do as well too.
At the middle school level, they do homework club. Um, and they started implementing, and Kim and Mary mentioned this last time, the academic obligation, so slips that go home and say, your kid's missing these things. Can you help with it at home or can they stay the state? Um, and then the R E S T process. So we have a behavior interventionist and a secondary interventionist. Um, and so if they get to that point where interventions aren't happening, uh, aren't working in the classroom, then the expectation is they get referred to E S T to get parents involved in those meetings.
Educational support team.
And Flex, which you guys mentioned, but that's an opportunity to call kids back to organize these skills.
And summer opportunities sometimes too. Good, good question.
I'm curious about the, the homework piece that you're, that you said you don't do homework. Is that a department sort of? Okay. Or is that a Shane thing?
For me, in my experience, when I give the homework out, it was quite a piece an awful lot. One, parents weren't able to help. Um, or heard, well, that's not how I learned it. That's not how I did it.
Here, let me teach them my way.
Nothing's changed. I'm sorry, math has not changed. So, um, and then I'm spending the next day doing all of it again. And so whereas like the homework is like, hey, it's that extra practice and then the next day we'll clear up any like these conceptions. It was like, I'm just redoing it. So I'm spending two or three days just like reteaching, because the homework wasn't done. So now I'm breaking it down into smaller pieces and we're working on it in class. Um, and again, that was the organization piece. Put it in your binder, get it out, come back. Now, do I give some homework? I do give homework sometimes. Like, and it's usually their choice. I'm like, all right, we only have homework if you are not accomplishing what I feel like you need to be able to accomplish today. It's your choice. Um, because they have their class time to work on their work. And if they don't get what, done what I'm expecting them to get done, then I'm like, all right, then you have to finish it for homework. So are there instances of, now I don't do that with all my classes. Like that's my, um, Integrated One kids. For my honors kids and my calculus kids, they're getting home. So they do get the homework. Um, but yeah, what I find with those kids who are like our average student or those that are struggling a little bit, sending the homework on caused homework issues, then it helped.
And I think that, so the remediation, the remedial classes that we do teach, oftentimes the kids need us to help support them or the co-teacher who's in the classroom to support them because we really are the ones that know what they're needing, what we want to give them as prompting questions. As opposed to giving a kid an answer, like I'm gonna draw it out of them. Um, and at home, parents just, it's not parents' fault. I mean, I have a eight-year-old. He's bringing homework home and I'm like, I don't know how the teacher did that. And I teach math and he's bringing math homework home, you know? So it's not, it's not a parent, it's not a parent's fault. It's just that we feel, I think that oftentimes with the, the intro classes, we want to kind of like build that ground level for the kids so that when they move on, they can, um, they can be more successful independently at home. Um, I think all of my upper level classes, so I teach Integrated Three, AP Statistics and Pre-Calculus, they all have homework every single night. And I expect them to do it every single night. Um, that's just the expectation. All of my kids have a binder in every single class. So if you've lost your binder and you're, that's gonna be upsetting for you to copy all of those notes for the rest of the whole year. But, um, but I think that it just depends on the course and kind of what, what our expectations are for that scaffolded. We're scaffolding the expectations for kids. They're, they're consistent that we want them to all kind of have the same experience. It's just that when they get to juniors and seniors, yeah, you're gonna have to be doing homework. Some of us have to do homework at home, even when we're working.
Another, for me, they'll also want to, this wasn't my main decision, but I made this years ago, the no homework piece or less homework. But nowadays, I mean, it's a really easy app that kids will just take a picture of something. And some of them will just tell you an answer, which I tell them, I don't care about the answer.
Show the work.
But some of them will get a very complicated process. That was more like college level math to get to this answer. And they'll write that down and I'm like, so that didn't help them at all as well too. And it's usually those kids who are struggling that they'll be the ones that'll pull out, right? Our upper level kids, they're, for the most part, right? They're in for the learning. They want to make sure they understand how to do it and all that.
Right.
So I avoid that little piece as well too with the no homework for that level.
Kelly, Kelly said in the middle school, we also have lab blocks to help support students. And I wonder if those are like the, the ones you were talking about in the LA.
No, I also have an ELA lab.
Oh, in addition to the reading, writing intervention. Okay. So they've got lab blocks to help support students in math in the middle school and she gives homework practice problems one to two times per week, which review material from the previous week. So, um, sending home things that are probably not new and more challenging and they need the support, but things that are more review and they can do at home.
And the math firm, we used to have math labs, but they were cut, our budget cuts.
Any other questions?
Go ahead. I have my last question. Where do our, majority of our kids end up in, in the, in the progression of math?
How far along into our curriculum or program?
I'm just curious. I mean, we're talking about lots of, of extra, you know, one A, one B, an extra year of, of algebra. Where would those kids end at the end of four years?
I guess for the majority, we're probably ending at Integrated Two, maybe, Integrated Three. Um, I will say, I see a lot more kids taking higher level courses in the future. Cause so I have an honors, Integrated One and Two class for freshmen and some of the graders join up. Um, and we really try pushing kids to take that if Kim and Kelly feel like they could handle that work. Um, and we're trying to, and if someone's on the edge, I'm like, put them in there because we can always make the adjustment. And this is my, well, second year of having those kids in calculus where I had them as freshmen and now like we're reaching the calculus. Um, and those classes, like that upper level class, they're becoming larger. For that as well too. But I would say overall, on average, like the majority of our kids end up taking Integrated Two. But now we've also added a personal finance class. Um, we've added that. And so some kids are choosing to take that now instead of the Integrated Two. But again, that's based off of what their thoughts that they're gonna do, whether it's college or career readiness.
Some kids take that and.
And, yeah.
Integrated Two or Integrated Three.
Yeah, we're always pushing, please take some personal finance.
I'm kind of interested in that last 15% that you talked about. Um, I hire every year some two, three yard guys that are juniors, seniors or just graduated, probably not going on to college, but some do. And we have been amazed at can't do any math at all. Can't calculate the, the, uh, square footage of a rectangle. Can't, don't know what percentages are, or they sort of do, but they can't do anything with it when you start. And I say, how do you, how do you get a high school degree and not be able to do seven, what I think is junior high level math? But they're, they're getting out. Now, I'll, I'll preface that with, uh, none of the kids I'm thinking of came from Mill River. Came from Otter Valley.
I'm thinking like, what kids are.
You had them scared.
No, no, no Mill River kids. The other thing that's got nothing to do with math is handwriting. Can't take a phone message and write down a note that anybody else can read.
Can't say anything.
It's unbelievable.
I'll say like, those are not high school standards, percent or area of rectangle. But we definitely teach those where we still are meeting the kids where they're at. And so I certainly just even my Integrated One kids, the Yavre freshmen, I do a whole unit on percents. And I'm always telling them like, we're, we're going to be embarrassed when you get out into the world and you are not understanding what a percent is or how, what percentage of something is. Or I'm like, that's an adult thing that we should know and this is where you're going to learn.
Simple decimal points are good too. We, we do, I thought it was so simple. Our zoning permits are $10 per hundred square feet. Now you would think that is a really simple calculation and you would not believe the number of adults are like, how do I do that? It's like, just move it over. Just to the left. You're good. I'm just kidding. Not there.
Huge thanks to our educators who came out tonight and, and hopefully you've heard that theme again of everything's not just peachy. We're figuring out where our kids, kids need support. We're trying to do that work and you're seeing the work that's happening. Uh, and hopefully as we continue to have these conversations, we'll see some of those results. And if the things we're trying aren't working, we'll find something else to try until we find something that does work. If, if you're comfortable, I'd love to excuse our educators. You can stay as long as you want. But I know you have school tomorrow too. So nobody's gonna be offended if you do leave now.
I would add this. So like when I first started, we had these meetings every year and then they went away.
Yeah.
Very disappointed. I'm very happy that you guys are willing to meet with us as departments and live like.
Glad to hear the work that you're doing because the work that you're doing with our students is the most important work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I felt very guilty.
Moving along, the next would be class size update. And that would be me. Board policy, board policy does dictate that we do this once a year. So I thought it would make tons of sense when we were building the schedule over the summer of things where we're gonna do presentations throughout the year, that we would do this presentation during budget season. Cause this seems very relevant. So this is a policy that doesn't tell us when we have to do it. It just says annually. Uh, so I have given you a copy, folks that are already in here. Give a couple more out. And it's on the screen for our folks who are attending virtually. Want to explain this a little bit. Uh, so the first table that you see up there, I don't want you to be misled by that. I just thought it was interesting to see an average per grade. And I thought it would be interesting to see how our schools are lining up with enrollment. Uh, you'll notice two things on that first table. I've shaded a 22 and a 25. And I think it's worth noting that at that kindergarten level, uh, when we hit 22, we start thinking about what's going on in that classroom and how we're supporting that classroom. Uh, 22 is generally not where we would split a kindergarten class, but we want to be careful about how we're supporting that class. Uh, if we're hitting 23, 24, 25, we start to think about splitting that class. Absolutely. Uh, you'll see that second grade though has 25 students. Uh, when we get beyond kindergarten, generally we look at a number more of 26, 27, 28 to start thinking about splitting that class, if that makes sense. Uh, so I highlight those two numbers because those are close. Um, when I look at fifth grade and see 20, uh, I don't, I don't get as concerned as, as a 25 or even a 22 in kindergarten, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Uh, you'll see that Clarendon has our larger class sizes at this point. Uh, and Wallingford has some that are approaching there, but Wallingford's had a little bit of a decline in enrollment. Uh, Wallingford has kind of gone up and down, maybe if you look at the last six years or so. Clarendon has stayed about steady. So we're in a little bit of a decline at Wallingford, if that makes sense. Uh, average per grade, if you, if you ignore our pre-K numbers, uh, because those aren't maybe the most indicative of enrollment because pre-K is optional. If you look at kindergarten through sixth grade, it's really interesting that we really hover between 12 and 14 kids per class if we average across the district, if that makes sense. So first table, questions on any of those? Fantastic. Uh, second table, I wanted to show you how some of those classes are arranged because they become, uh, pretty different arrangements in Shrewsbury and Tinmouth are smaller schools. Cause you'll see Tinmouth having six kids in kindergarten. Well, it's hard to have a class of six kids and that's all you have. My days of middle school, um, if I had 12 middle schoolers in a room, I felt like that was crazy and I couldn't get them to talk. You know, something magical happened in middle school when I hit like 15, 16, 17 kids. Then they were actually engaged in what we were doing and some would talk and then, you know, but 12 was not enough. Uh, I wonder, you know, different grades, you're gonna have different thresholds there for the, for the best size of a class. Just think it's worth noting that sometimes a small class is not the best thing to have. You hit that tipping point, we're actually too small and you don't have engagement and you, you can't do as much as you could. So in our smaller schools, uh, they do have combined pre-Ks as well. In Shrewsbury, our K and our one are grouped together to have 14 students. Our third and our fourth are grouped together to have 20 and our fifth and sixth have 18 grouped together. I shaded that 14 and then that 10 next to it because you're gonna, you might say that, that's 10 students in the second grade. That seems a little small. K one is grouped together, but the K one teacher, Ms. Bonifine and the second grade teacher, uh, Ms. Rice, they do a lot of working together where they'll split their kids up. And, uh, Erin will do some literacy work with some of the first grade students, for example. Julia might do some work, uh, on math with, with, uh, the second grade students. So there's some flexibility there and that's why I shade that, just to draw your attention to that, uh, to explain why that 10 might look a little low. got 17 in there. Our second grade, and actually I should have shaded those two as well. Our second, our second grade group is actually split a little bit and I have a really hard time putting it on a table because of the way those students are split, if that makes sense. Three fours combined for 13 students, five sixes combined for 18 students. Tinmouth has had a bump in enrollment the last several years. And where Shrewsbury tended to be about 15, 20 students higher enrollment than Tinmouth, we're seeing that Tinmouth and Shrewsbury are about neck and neck these days. And you'll notice those class sizes are pretty similar when you're looking across those two schools. The overall, sorry, I'll pause there. Questions on that chart where I've broken the grade level or combined classrooms? Okay. Overall, average per classroom of our elementary groups there, if you take every single classroom, add those kids together and you average it, it's 15.71 kids per classroom. When you're looking at a kindergarten that might, you know, 18 students might be about perfect in a kindergarten. And you're looking at sixth grade where about, you know, 20 students might be about perfect, you'll see that we're at about 16. So we have a little bit of room there to absorb students. We could definitely bring some students into some of our elementary schools and I don't think we'd be getting too far past a reasonable, reasonable classroom average. Questions on that? Elementary classroom average, 15.71? Okay. Mill River gets far more interesting because we have 712 here. We run our middle school program for the seventh grade and the eighth grade. So we have set math, ELA, science, social studies teachers for that seventh and that eighth grade. Then you get into high school and you've got high school teachers who are teaching all sorts of ranges of nine through 12. And as you heard Shane say, some eighth grade students are even joining those upper level high school classes at times. If you take every single course in this building and you take away study hall or learning lab or some other kind of interesting independent study outside of class arrangements and you look at academic and other curricular courses, so you'll take your PE classes, your English classes, your music classes, all of those more, I'll say, what was the word I was using earlier? The, not traditional. Those classes that if I say class, you're going to think of that kind of typical classroom, not a study hall. You add all those up and you average those, you get 14.16, which seems a little low for 712. So that makes me start digging and wondering. So what I dug up, I found state data from 2016, 2017. I could not find it for years in between. 2016. Oh. Good, good suggestion. In 2016 and 2017, our average teacher to student ratio at the 712 Mill River was 10.65 and 10.88. So we've moved a lot since 2017 to have our average raise up to 14. I looked at Vermont and what I found is in 2016, we were actually right around the state average in 2016. 2017, the state average bumped to 12.3. And then in around 2020, the average was still at around 12.3. So I just want to give you that context of where we were six years ago or so, where the state was, where we've moved and where the states moved. And the entire country, really interestingly, throughout a lot of that time, has stayed fairly steady at 16 to one ratio, which really surprised me. I thought the national average would have been higher than that, but I found several sources with several different years attached to it that still showed that our, our nation average of classroom student to teacher ratios was 16 to one. You know, where I come from, North Carolina, I never taught a class under 22 students in middle school. Five years in North Carolina, that just was standard and that's the way things were done. And, you know, we did not have, and I'm not saying this is a good or a bad, I'm just saying this was reality, we did not have support staff in our classrooms. We had those numbers and teachers were expected to, to do that. Again, not saying good or bad. But that was my experience in North Carolina, which was very different from my experience up here. And then you can kind of see that, wow, the national average is in the middle there, which does kind of make some sense then if you look at the extremes in the country. Interesting, though, that that average hasn't shifted much for the entire country. Questions on that number? Thoughts, comments?
David?
Just something to wonder about, I really think.
I mean, I know we did cuts, you know, looking at, we looked at specific classes and said, okay, there's only two kids in that, in that section. There's only four kids in that section. And that's what drove some of the decrease in staffing. So obviously, we've gotten there.
Yep.
And hopefully, we don't have to ever adjust again.
Yep. Fair enough. I reached out regionally because I was curious too about in the region. And I heard back from somebody a little bit south of us that said that they tend to cap classes at a couple of levels, but they cap at 16 with no support for classes that are safety, potential safety hazards. So thinking about a technical class, so over at Stafford. And then their general cap would be on at about, I think, 23 or 24 for a class that didn't have safety concerns. I heard from our neighbor Slate Valley that they're, they're right at about 14 at Fair Haven. So they're right where we are. So I was interested to hear that, that folks around us are not too far off from where we are either. If I hear from other folks, I'll share that with you, but I really only heard from two people when I was asking.
Just a quick question, and I don't know if you have the answer. I know there used to be a state school board policy that dealt with class size. Is that still in place?
I cannot find anything current.
Okay.
Because our board policy references something.
Yeah.
And I cannot find it. And wasn't it several years back that the legislature actually commissioned a study and the study was done, but then no hard recommendations were made? Right? Does anybody remember that?
Sounds like the state.
Because, yeah, so there, there is no, because I think the, the question at the time was, do we just set state numbers of max and minimum class sizes? Or just maximum or something? And the state never did.
Yeah, I just remember, and again, this goes back years. So I'm talking 2010 or so, that the state came down with, with this policy.
Yep.
And it was a pain in the neck.
Yeah.
Because you couldn't get it to match up with your individual school, you know, which at the time was, was high school over at Fair Haven.
Had to be 12 to 18 or something like that. It just didn't work.
It was, it was crazy. So I know, or I think I know that we, we still have a policy on the books.
We do. And our policy says that we will set local procedure.
Okay.
And our local procedure for the last five or so years has been those ballpark numbers of.
I, I just, you know, want to make sure that we're not following something that doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah. Yeah. No, and I appreciate you bringing that up because I did look at the policy and I did see that and I went, oh. And I looked and I could not find the, the title of what it references is just not in there, which is probably something we want to look at in policy committee.
Yep.
About updating that.
Absolutely, yeah.
So great that we're reviewing these and giving our reports and finding things we need to fix. And I, I could have absolutely missed it. So it wouldn't hurt to look again, but I did try to find it and I couldn't. Good question.
Better to have local numbers anyway.
What's that?
It's better to have local numbers anyway.
You know, it, it, it would be really hard if the state set numbers thinking about really large schools that maybe happen in some of our larger cities and we couldn't do things locally with our small, small schools based on those numbers. That would be a hard thing. Yeah. Yeah.
Anybody else? Anybody have other questions? All right.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Yep, absolutely.
Also, Brian, later on during transact, other legal business, we have to give me authority to sign a board chair.
Oh, yes, thank you, thank you, thank you.
So we can write that down. All right.
Lucky you.
Yeah, you know, why not? All right, so the next one would be VSBA annual meeting update.
Ah. So it was actually really wonderful and I would love to put a plug out. Hartford School Board comes en masse. They all hear all the reports, they all hear it all together, they have a very good time. They, for the most part, come for the one day. Some of them stay for the second day. But I think there's a lot of information that they all get, which is really wonderful. And I know the VSBA is looking at how to encourage boards to, to have more representation than, you know, just sending a single person or not sending anybody. I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of stuff that goes on and a lot of conversation that goes on that's actually really interesting. So I brought the agenda with me so that I'd try and remember some of, the keynote speaker was phenomenal, she was really good, she was really wonderful. I had gone to a workshop called the School Board's Role in District Climate and Culture, which was very interesting and would have been wonderful if our entire community engagement committee had been there because it had some interesting ideas on how to engage the public. And then there was some work on equity audits, which I did not have a chance to go to, unfortunately. They had the, the S.A. Business Meeting, which Brian attended, I think. Did you go to that?
VSBA, I missed.
No, the VSA.
Oh, the VSA.
They were at the same time.
Sorry, I missed that.
Okay.
Because I was scooting back here.
I did go to the VSBA Business Meeting. All of the things that we voted on for resolutions were passed. So, so there was some interesting conversation on the independent schools piece, just like I said, it would be when we started talking about it and it all seemed so simple. And all of a sudden, everybody started talking about that. So there's, there's a little bit of, of conflict within the, all of the boards in Vermont, mostly focused on districts that have choice and districts that do not have choice, or tuitioning, not choice, I shouldn't say that. So that is going to be another topic of conversation. One of the things that came out of the second day, there was an absolutely phenomenal screening of a movie called Listen Up, which was really wonderful. And I gave a link to, to Jody to see whether they could use it in, in TAs or whether we could make use of it at all. It was a group of kids that were looking at their sexuality, their, their place in the world, you know, growing up, how people respected them, the whole thing. And they did it all with some music that they designed and it was really a professional, wonderful thing. And, and that was made available to all school boards if they wanted to use it, or all schools, for free, which was really nice. And then I also went to something where they were talking about youth on school boards. And it was really interesting. Our, our one rep has left and Sydney's not here anymore, is she?
No, she left.
No. And it was, it really focused on the fact that we're shortchanging both them and us by not including them as much as we could, you know, really including them in voting, including them in, you know, if they want to join a committee, having them do that. I mean, not, not voting on, on fiscal things, but on, you know, taking part in policy meetings, just giving them more responsibility and expecting more of them, like we do with our students all the time. And we keep saying, we're going to have higher expectations for our students. And our expectations for our student board members, pretty low, you know? Please come and tell us how the school, you know, what, what's going on in school. And it was amazing how many board members said, oh, that's all we do, too. But the, the boards that, including me, you know, the boards that really included their student members in a more, you know, in a more serious way, really felt like they had, they had better participation, they get more out of the students and the students got more out of the process. They didn't just feel like they were there to report what was, you know, what spirit day was going on. So I wanted us to think about that. But the biggest thing really was, I mean, there, there was also conversation on the new governance standards and all of that'll come out later on in the year. But the participation piece and the training piece, you know, in terms of boards that do trainings together so that they understand every, every person on the board gets the same information rather than the way, a lot of boards do it, and, and we do it, where we have our little silos, you know, we work in our particular committees and, and we get together. But we don't all really have the same grasp of all of the knowledge that is presented to us. I mean, we just don't. And it would be great if we could try and do a bigger presence at the annual conference. I think there'll be a way to do that more cheaply. They aren't going to, you know, there'll probably be some kind of special price for, everybody more than one, you know, we break down or whatever. You don't have to spend the night at, at Lake Maury. And, you know, obviously, not everybody might be able to do that. If we had enough warning, maybe, you know, more of us could take the day off or, or whatever. But my report, it was great. It was very interesting. I encourage everybody to go.
Awesome. Anyone have any questions?
Adrian? Yeah, I have, hi, can everybody hear me?
Yeah, oh, yes, you were very loud, actually.
Okay. Oh. Is that better after turning it down on my end? I don't know how this works.
Much better.
It took me 14 minutes to fire up my computer, so I'm so sorry, it was a little late. Adrian, I am wondering, the School Board's role in climate and culture, is that something that was done through the VSBA? Is that like a training we could do? Do we have a budget for that?
Um, I think, you know, the, the gentleman who's doing a lot of the board development now, Phil Gore, actually came to the VSBA from Texas where he was in charge of board development for the entire state of Texas on their, on their state school board, associating, he had like 18 people working for him. So he's very happy and to come to individual boards and yes, we have to pay for it. It's not exorbitantly expensive, but he does some great activities on board development and, and working as a group and how to really approach the community and how to, to, to run community forums, all those kind of things. I mean, we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
And I think, we have professional development money for ourselves, don't we?
I believe so.
Yep.
I don't think it's a lot.
Send the budget.
Can we look, can we look maybe into having some PD with this person?
I have suggested it in the past. If the board so decides, that would be great.
Whose responsibility is that?
I think normally the board chair takes on that, that piece to introduce it and to try and get people to tie into it. But any, any committee member, any board member could, could introduce the idea. I mean, there's no rule.
All right. Matt, is that something that we could look into?
Absolutely. I can bring it up to Andrea's board chair, but I'm not opposed to the idea, so absolutely.
Thank you. Great. And then my other question is, is how do we access Listen Up?
Um, the, the access code that we got was for schools' use and I suppose if the school can access it, Jody's had trouble getting it, the, the link to work, but we'll figure it out. I'm not sure if it, you know, if we would have to do that as a group. I, I think it would, you know, it, it's a lengthy performance. I mean, it was probably, I, we didn't see it from the very beginning. I think they cut off the first 10 or 15 minutes and it was still 40, 45 minutes. It had everybody's rapt attention, but, I mean, it would be something that would be a, a great thing to screen or to, what the woman who, who produced it suggested that it's great to use just in pieces, like in TAs, to, to prompt conversations. It's really accessible for kids. I mean, the, the kids that performed were just kids from Vermont, you know? I mean, they, they weren't, you know, like professionals from out of state that, that put this together. They were, they were just kids. And they were remarkable when they were given the opportunity to, to write and perform and to really say what they felt. It was interesting. So.
Thank you.
I'll try and figure out a way that, I'll, I'll ask the woman whether or not we can board members, as long as we promise not to show it outside of, you know, no performances.
Thank you.
And Bruce Morton, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, I just looked up, Listen Up Vermont has a website.
Yeah, I just looked up, "Listen Up Vermont" has a website, thevermontproject.org, so you can get all the information there.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions? Well, thank you for the update.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for sending me. It was really good.
The next item would be bus/van contracts.
Okay, quick update. We had set our proposal due date for vans November 1. We got no proposals.
Wow, nobody has any cars.
I know, I'm surprised. Nicole's gonna be working to continue reaching out to dealerships, and they may not have requested to our proposal, but if we can get them on the phone, I bet we can start figuring some of that out. So, it might be a little more challenging than just looking at the three bids we got back and deciding, but we're gonna keep working on that. The bus, I have a little bit of bad news. The last time we had talked about the bus, we had been told that there might be easier to procure a bus with handicap accessibility options. Turns out that it's not enough to make a difference. So, we were thinking, "Oh, maybe we can get one next month or three months from now." Not, you know, a year out, no. It wouldn't save us much time. So, when we followed up with that and clarified that, it turned out to not sound as good as it sounded, not be as good as it sounded. So, we are continuing to pursue getting the details for purchasing a bus because if we don't purchase one now, when are we gonna purchase one next year? While it's probably gonna be a next-year fiscal budget purchase, we still see the need to get the ball rolling on it so that we don't end up in the same position next year. So, we're waiting to get that back from the bus manufacturer. So, that's what I got today.
How many less miles are we driving a year? I mean, we've got almost daily bus consolidation messages going out. I get three of those, by the way.
How much for three different schools that you're associated with somehow?
I don't know why. I have no idea.
I will look into that and fix that for you.
No, I'll call.
Call BJ. He'll fix it. I don't, you know, I don't think it's a huge savings. I don't think it is. Are you thinking, "Do we really need a bus"?
No, no, I was just curious if we were putting less miles on the bus, that we aren't gonna feel it as badly if we miss a year, I mean, which it looks like we're going to do whether we like it or not.
I, you know, talking with Nicole, it sounds like we can continue maintaining what we have. We'll be okay. We're not gonna be hard up. We're just gonna do some more maintenance that we were not necessarily wanting to do. We just got a bus back, so we don't want to send another bus out for maintenance, but we have a bus we can send out for maintenance because we have more buses than drivers. So, instead of putting one out to pasture, we'll maintain it, and then we'll plan on having a new one next year. So, we'll be okay. I don't think the difference in wear and tear, I don't think, is substantial, but it won't hurt that we're having...
Well, I meant as a, you know, like as a fleet.
Yeah.
Like we have an extra bus. I mean, we aren't driving all the buses every day.
When do we consider them aged out, Brian?
Great question. I don't know. I can check on that and let the board know.
Nick?
That was gonna be question one, when do we consider them aged out? And question two, what is the lead time of a bus now? When do we need to pull the trigger on saying, "Hey, we're gonna order one"?
It's looking like a year. I am very hopeful because since we spoke at our last board meeting, we've given Nicole the go-ahead, get the pricing information, and let's move on it. So, we're just waiting on getting the information so we can bring it to the board meeting. We just haven't gotten it yet. But it's still, it's a year out, so that's why we're talking about, "Let's do it now." I will find out how we decide when we've aged buses out, and I will email the whole board, let you know.
Thank you.
Yep.
Stan?
Oh, Stan might know that.
Yeah, the plan, now we follow the prior to COVID starting, was that we age buses on 10 years, and we tried to stay on the schedule. You know, replacing two of them each year, but we've kind of got off that track, so we're starting to see more in the repair and maintenance line this year than in past years. But I guess we'll just have to take, you know, what we budgeted for at least a new buses this year to cover any increase in the maintenance costs, you know, for the current year. But our schedule has been a 10-year usage on the buses before we traded them in, so we were scrapping them.
Thank you, Stan.
Anything else? Awesome, thank you. Moving along, rock climbing activities account.
Oh, Stan's gonna trust me to do this one. We are looking for a motion to open a student activities account for rock climbing at the high school. So, our student activities account are the part of our budget where we take fees in or dues or things like that, and then we pay out of that, so it's not the general fund budget. Zach Byrd, our new science teacher, who has been support staff with us for a long time, Zach has taken over the reins of rock climbing from Brendan Ernie. I used to do rock climbing with Brendan Beck when I was teaching here, too, so it's awesome to see Zach keeping that alive. He wanted to create a fund for the high school so that he could solicit donations to subsidize rock climbing fees for students who couldn't afford that. The middle school, it's taken care of through the after-school program, but the high school, it's not. So, we need the student activities account to facilitate that so that everything's done, it's in the books and done appropriately. So, that's why we're asking for a motion to open a student activities account at the high school for rock climbing.
So moved.
Awesome, thank you.
Julie, please second it.
And a second from Sam. Nick, you got your hand up?
I'm subiring you. Can I presume that this is done at the rock climbing facility account?
Absolutely.
All right, being that we have a motion on the floor and we have a second, any discussion?
What are we talking about for dollars here?
Just an account.
It's just an account to put donations into and fees.
Oh, okay.
Just a pot to put the money in.
I heard something about an offset for...
Yeah. It would just be what Zach could collect through donations. There's no money yet.
Okay, all right, sure.
Of course, there will be an account, which might get easier and longer.
All right, well, all in favor? It is unanimous. We're good.
Awesome, thank you, everybody.
Committee reports, personnel, contracts. Len, that's you.
That's right here. We met tonight, and so we have a couple of contracts to bring to the full board. First, we have two new hires, varsity baseball coaches, and we dealt with them together in the committee, so I think we can do the same thing here at the full board. Varsity baseball head coach Bastian Auer, and also varsity baseball head coach Nick Webb. So, I would make a motion that contracts be offered to these two folks as varsity baseball coaches.
Is that seconded?
That was Sam.
What was the question?
Sam seconded.
Oh, okay. Discussion. I guess these senior names don't work great.
What'd you say?
All those in favor? Opposed, abstaining, thank you very much. Next one, a contract for Gordon Martindale as a custodian, and I'd make that a motion.
I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain, okay? Number three, Teresa Sair, an administrative two-year contract as the after-school program director.
And Brian, do you just wanna go through the process, if you would, please?
So, we followed a similar process to how we hired two of our other directors, Director of IT, Director of Buildings and Grounds. We posted, and Len and I, Len as the Personnel Chair, and myself, sat down and we looked at the applications that came in from the posting. We sorted through those and we identified folks who had materials that rose to a level where we felt comfortable bringing them in for an interview. We compiled a committee to do the hiring, and that had our outgoing after-school director as part of the committee. We had a site director, we had a site staff, we also had a board member and an elementary principal involved, so a range of stakeholder roles at the table. That committee met with our candidates, and they were tasked with recommending one or two candidates to us. If they sent us one candidate, we were gonna bring that candidate straight to Personnel. If they could not decide and they sent us two candidates, Len and I were gonna sit down and work with the two candidates to try and make a recommendation to the Personnel Committee. The Hiring Committee, the Hiring Panel, very strongly and unanimously put this person forward, so we brought that to Personnel tonight.
Okay, thanks. So...
Question, Nick?
Yeah. Do you have like a job duties or description for this particular role that you can just highlight real quick?
Yeah, this, in broad strokes, this is the person who would coordinate across the district our after-school programs at our elementary schools and currently at the middle school right here now, and our summer program that happens, you know, about a four-week or so program that we offer in the summer. So, this person would do all the paperwork, they do some grant writing because 21st Century Grant has been a big deal in the past in setting up our program. 21C Grant is coming back, and we're writing an application again right now. So, grant writing, paperwork, overseeing the site directors.
Is that okay, Nick?
Yeah, great question.
Okay, great. Thank you. Let's see, we had a motion and it was seconded, right?
Yep.
Okay. We had our discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you, Sam. And that is it. Our next meeting is December 7, and we're gonna, we're going to have it start at 6:30. We're looking at the possibility as we get into...
Bless you.
As we get into December, January, February, of whether we actually need to have a Personnel Committee meeting all the time or not. Obviously, sometimes of the year, it's pretty busy with... I mean, we have the superintendent evaluation done. And I should bring that up, that was one of the other things that we talked about as to who would be looking at to help with that interview or that evaluation process. And we talked about Principal from Claren and Wallingford, Tinmouth Shrewsbury, Mill River, Coral Stone, Pam, BJ, Tim, Stan, the after-school coordinator, and Jody, that they would all be participating.
So, basically, all my direct reports.
Yeah, would be participating in that evaluation, and I'm gonna be sending them all out an email to let them know that come spring, we'll be looking at having them fill that out and go from there. So, as I said, the next meeting was scheduled for December 7 at 6:30. At the next board meeting, we will look at whether we, in fact, need to have that December 7 meeting or not. We're gonna try to look at it. At the meeting mid-month, and if we don't need to have it, then there's no sense in having it. And it's interesting, you were talking about, Liz was talking about that film, and Adrian, you were too, if we don't have a Personnel Committee meeting, it might not be a bad idea to put it in at 6 a.m., no, not 6 a.m.
I'm not coming.
That took care of that idea. At 6 o'clock, and do it. So, you know, we'll look at some flexibility there.
That's it.
Thank you.
Anytime.
Moving along, policy F5 second reading.
We just need a motion to do it, right? Yep. I'll just confirm it was in the Herald and the appropriate amount of lead time for us to do this tonight, so.
Do you have the title?
Educational records, was that the one? Yep.
Josh, would you go ahead and make the motion?
Yep.
Sure.
Make that motion.
And I seconded it.
So, I got a second.
Yep.
Any discussion? That being said, all in favor? That would be unanimous. We're good. Building and grounds.
Kinda quiet, nothing's been scheduled up and stuff. I think we've got a Finance Committee meeting coming up. We're trying to probably do the double, so as we did before, and get to that. It's been kinda rough for me. I've got some bad news today for some people that I know, and I'll get to that a little bit later on. But, and I'll get a time to chance with, talk with Tim and see what, if he's having anything, if he wants us to work with some material, then getting into spaces that need more work than we thought we had, we were set up for. So, we'll work some stuff up, but I'll let you know next meeting.
Doug, if you don't mind, I've got some updates. Tim gave finance yesterday, and I can share those, because we had asked for a report from Tim. Tim was sharing yesterday, so I told Tim, "I don't want to pull you two nights in a row. I'll share what you shared for the full board." So, he shared that he's enjoying his time here so far, that it's been hectic, but people have been very patient and are seeing the good work that he's doing. That's my piece. I'm telling you that people are seeing the good work that he's doing. He didn't share that. He did mention some things that we've fallen behind on a little bit, some state compliance reporting pieces. You know, the positive of that is that we're moving in the right direction. We're getting everything in order that we need to get in order. The negative is that some of these pieces, we've been behind for a couple of years on. One of the bigger ones is stormwater runoff. The state is working with us, and we don't have any issues now. They see us getting in compliance, but the stormwater runoff one is one that has some interesting implications. We are working with an engineer to get a proposal together, and we have about two weeks to wrap that process up, which will give us an 18-month extension. So, we're gonna get an 18-month extension. The interesting thing is, we don't know what they're gonna tell us we have to do here. So, something that the Finance Committee had talked about was repaving some of our parking lots and some of our entrance drives. Tim's recommendation is we do not look into that until we hear back about our stormwater runoff piece, because we would not want to pave something and then be told we have to rip it up because there's too much impervious ground, something like that. So, that is an unknown cost as of right now, and we are working on that, and we'll have about 18 months to figure out what that looks like. Some of the work that he's been doing at all of our sites, we had given him discretion on using some of his funding, instead of setting some priorities of bigger projects. He's chipping away at a lot of things like heating. We found a lot of heating pieces at all of our sites that we needed to address. Tim had started firing up all our boilers a month ago before it got cold to make sure that things were working so that when it did get cold, we'd be in good shape. And the good news is, we've addressed all of those except one, our wood boiler here at the high school, we are not currently using. We're using our backup heat because we have a part on order for that wood boiler that should be coming in tomorrow or Friday, we're hoping. We've done a lot of cleanup in this building. We're on dumpster number, I think, four, because they were hauling one away today and putting a new empty one out here. We have a lot of things in this building that have just collected dust for a long time. A lot of broken chairs, a lot of old tables, a lot of things that have been put in storage a lot of things that have been put in storage and we haven't cleaned out. And part of that idea of we want our buildings to be welcoming and presentable means cleaning up. So Tim's been doing a lot of that work at the high school, and he mentioned a lot of volunteers pitching in, not just our custodial crew, but some of our other staff and admin dining in and helping with that. So that's great cleanup work happening here. Clarendon has a gym floor in the works. We have some grant funding for that, too, which is fantastic. We're looking at a flagpole at Clarendon, too, because Clarendon does not have an official flagpole. So that's in the works. Shrewsbury had their septic pumped, and that had not been done in the last five years. So that's an important thing as we get into the winter to have that ready so that we don't have issues.
No problem in January.
Yeah. Also, looking at some kitchen items at Shrewsbury, a dishwasher up there and some other things, so we're moving on that. We've had some fire alarm panels that we found issues with, and we're replacing Clarendon and Mill River, I believe. Tinmouth, we have a lot of grant funding for a modular unit that we're trying to partner with the town and do that work to make sure that what we're doing is still in keeping with the spirit of Tinmouth, but providing some more space. As you heard during our class size discussion, Tinmouth's numbers are way up. Sorry, I say way up, and percentage-wise, they're way up, but we're really talking about 15 kids. And so I hope what you're hearing is, we're doing some pretty good work at all of our sites. Tim has not been here very long, but I think he's taking what he does very seriously, and I have heard nothing but good things. And I have had people track me down to tell me good things, which doesn't happen all the time when we hire people. So that's the update from Tim.
Is he going to move on to the other schools with dumpsters?
Good question. I think Mill River has collected everybody's stuff over the years in a lot of ways.
Well, I know we had, I mean, I know at Shrewsbury, we had a dumpster.
Yeah.
For the garage.
Yeah.
Everybody has a building that they tend to put stuff in. I was just curious.
Good question. I don't know.
Okay. Just curious.
I think we've had more stuff stashed here than, you know, if you walked around Wallingford, you might not find old broken desks. I think sometimes those gravitate here.
You'd find them in Shrewsbury.
Okay, fair enough.
In the garage, sort of shed out back.
Okay.
You know, I think, Adrian, that.
But that might have been cleaned up.
Yeah, Terry really.
Well, that's why I was curious.
Piece by piece, dump day by dump day. If you go in there, it's pretty ordinary.
Well, we had done a complete cleanup about, but it was 10 years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know.
No, I think it, I was just in there a couple months ago, and it was in really good shape.
Good question.
And I was just in the Tinmouth basement, because when we did our safety walk-throughs, we went in every nook and cranny, and things are looking good.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Moving along, community engagement.
Thank you, unmuted, and then you don't get nervous. Sorry. Thanks for, we, so our next meeting truly is the big update. Remember, we did shift it because of it being on Election Day, so where is it? Bad calendar, there it is. 6:30 on the 15th, which is a Tuesday, we will gather. You know, I think one of our big topics, just to spoiler or tease it out, is really getting folks engaged, kind of a crossover collab with all the work that folks are doing with the new budget season, right, and just kind of peppering that into a lot of our conversations, too, and really getting as much of that out there ahead of time as we can.
Awesome. Thank you. Finance.
Good evening, everyone. For payroll this evening, we have regular payroll dated October 21 in the amount of $594,798.87. We also have regular payroll dated November 1 in the amount of $8,181.53 for a grand total of $602,980.40. For our pay warrant, we have a pay warrant from the general fund in the amount of $163,560.68. We have a pay warrant stamped official in the amount of $3,636.50. From our after-school program, we have a pay warrant in the amount of $863.70. From our lunch program, we have a pay warrant in the amount of $58,848.87. And in the general fund, we have a pay warrant in the amount of $59,659.3 for a grand total of $286,568.8. And I move that we accept and approve these pay orders and this payroll as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Sam. Any discussion? I'm going to make. Nope. Okay, I'm going to make you. Any discussion? No, being none, although in favor of approving payroll and these pay warrants as presented.
That's unanimous, Liz.
I got a tab of green, so we, is that unanimous, or is anyone opposed?
It was unanimous. You're good.
All right. Thank you, folks. I think it's really helpful that everybody gets all the check registers. Thank you for that. So the next meeting of the finance committee will be Monday, November 21 at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next would be transact other legal business.
Motion for Matt to sign our contracts on behalf of the board.
I'll make that motion.
No second. A second from either Paul or Liz. Any discussion? Obviously, I'm guessing probably not. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Any other, anything else under, Nick?
Got to get that mute button. So this may be more for Len and the personnel committee, but Monday, might have been Sunday, Vermont Digger had a short article on the scarcity of drivers ed teachers. And I know that's on the list because ours wants to retire. So I'm just throwing that out there.
Nick, I can tell you.
Where do we stand, and how do we remedy that?
We have, we have two individuals on staff, believe it or not, two, who are doing their coursework for that endorsement right now.
That is amazing.
Well.
No, great, great point.
Yeah, and I think, as a plug for anybody, you know, it, teaching, becoming a driver ed instructor, if you're a licensed educator, is not that difficult.
And you have job security if you do that.
You do, and you also have work in the summer, if you want it. And, I mean, it's an interesting job, I will say that.
Takes nerves of steel.
No, no.
Well, I'm here, it is, it is a well-kept secret because students are incredibly well-behaved because they want to.
Oh, yeah.
That's true.
I never had a discipline issue in any of my driver ed classes, never. And at one point here, we had 75 students for 45 minutes in the auditorium. That was driver ed class.
That's it?
And they listened.
That was it.
You told them to stop at stop signs, or what?
We got it done.
That's amazing.
It's a growing problem, I think.
Yes, it is. Nick, you're right.
Okay.
Anything else under transact legal, other legal business, anything?
I don't know if I, I've forgotten this. When are the surveys occurring?
I am actually waiting on our company to get back to me with links to access the survey. Everything is set and ready, and they told me early this week that they just have a high demand on support right now. So we're waiting on that, and we've gotten slowed down a little bit, absolutely.
Perfect.
So wherever we're supposed to drop them off, you'll tell us.
Not yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Agenda building.
Clarendon presentations are on the schedule next. Do we want to go to Clarendon for that meeting?
Sure. It's fine with me.
Okay, okay. Equity, so based on our equity policy, we need an annual update there, and that's on the schedule, too. We talked about that in our policy meeting, so I think that is timely.
With the visit to Clarendon, would we have the ability to arrive 10 minutes early for a tour?
Absolutely. I'll clear that with Jane. So 10 minutes early for the tour. I was wondering, the only other item I would recommend would be budget. We had a finance committee meeting. We have some proposals on the table. Liz sent some things out to the full board. We have a finance meeting that would be following our next full meeting pretty closely. I wonder if we want some time to look at that and discuss that as a full board? Or wait till the next finance meeting?
I think it's fine. I think it's, I think it helps the finance committee if the whole board talks about it, and then we go back and do that. I think that makes sense.
And I think we're looking at this less as we figured it out. Here, here's what we're going to bring to voters and vote on, and more as a process. So I wonder if more points in the process won't be a good thing. That's all I have.
I was just going to say, I don't want to talk on behalf of the finance committee, but I was able to sit in on part of that yesterday, and obviously, the more the rest of the board sees it, has input, talks about it, you're able to massage it that much more, so.
Good, good point.
Awesome. Thank you. Do we have a need for executive session? That being said, I'd like to move to adjourn.
Right on time.
Adjourn this meeting at 9:01.
Remarkably timed.
Right on time, 9:01.
I'm impressed.
Thank you.